Alright. So we'll call the order. Nope, status update for me. Alright, so we'll move on to the vote count for Plan C. Did everyone vote?
Oh, yeah. I forgot.
Did you vote right now?
Right now, yeah.
I want to do it right now.
Yeah, do it on your phone.
Do it on your phone, because we don't know.
You got your phone?
Yeah.
Okay, I will look, I'll just go do email.
Here you go.
Go do email.
Do you want me to text you the link? I emailed you.
Yeah, I just emailed you. I was weeding, that was my problem. It's to go taste the weeds.
So the roundup got, got you, did that?
Uh, the roundup is not working as well as the status is going to work. Because those suckers are still growing. Well, it's in my packet.
Did everyone else vote?
Did everyone else vote? Okay, everyone present voted. Larry, did you vote? Cool, okay. Um, do we have, do we have fourteen votes on minus minutes, or are we missing? Anyone who's not here?
Oh, what, let's, let's, um...
We've got thirteen people, thirteen.
Both of them.
We have thirteen.
I was gonna say, what's, what was the, um, what's give first?
What if I again? So it's gonna be. Visitors, username, and give first nineteen. Give first capital E.
Alright, it was give first what? Um. I'll text you right now. Alright, so why don't we, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem in saying that yes, I'm voting for Plan C. Because by the time I get through this, forget it. Okay, I don't vote with saying that.
Okay, so you'll tally that, so. Jihan, where are we at with our vote? I'm sorry. So we have thirteen responses. Going over responses, and I can share this with you. So we have thirteen responses, well, fourteen had a merits today. Um, and so eighty-four point six percent voted yes, fifteen point four percent voted no.
And then we're missing two responses.
We're missing Colleen and, um, Melody, no, Melody told me she voted. Yeah, Melody voted, so Colleen.
I'm on here, how would, is that the vote, the text that you just sent, Jihan?
Yes, and I emailed you too.
Sorry, I just got back out of town, I didn't have service, so I'm just getting caught up, but. I vote for draft map, see, see if that's the majority.
Can we go to the screen, because I think Jerry has seen, uh... Go ahead, Jerry.
Hi, is there any way to clarify the sound, it's not, it's not coming through at all, it's all garbled.
We need to turn it up. Turn the volume up, please.
How's that?
Are you able to hear us?
Slightly, I can hear you, but it's garbled, and I can't say, make out about two-thirds of the words, I can't.
Can you just leave the wire on that? Alright, is anyone else having trouble, or are we garbled for other people, I'm wondering if it's on Jerry's end or ours?
You sound okay on my end.
Okay.
Sounds fine to me.
That was very clear.
We'll try to be very clear, Jerry. So, it looks like we have passed, I, we can look at Colleen's. Vote. Um, just to ensure. So. So eighty-five point seven percent voted yes, fourteen point three percent voted no. Plus, Merica was the one of the yes.
That was the yes, yeah.
So that would be twelve yeses there, plus Merica.
I think what's individually. We go through, and there was a, there was a thing that happened this week, we have to, like, this is not supposed to be, like, truly, like, secret after, like, we voted, we just didn't want anyone to know it, so. Um, if we were here, we'd all be raising our hands, we can go through the responses. Alright, so Tony voted yes. I don't think Tony thought, hey. John voted yes. I didn't know him. Bob voted no. Molly voted yes. Bruce voted yes. Larry voted yes. Graham voted yes. Jason voted yes. Brenda voted yes. Jackie voted no. Babette voted yes. Charles voted yes. Melody voted yes. Colleen voted yes, and then Merica voted yes.
So it's nice, super majority.
We have a super majority, and I guess a final map.
Yeah.
For now.
As long as the council doesn't worry about that, because you know that that's, that's coming.
Well.
Well, I hope so.
The luck of the draw will be that with, Chris, Chris will get an eighty-one job?
Yes.
That would be, that would get a vote, that was a no from Holly before. So our good friend now has no competition on their fist, and it comes out.
I'm sorry.
Fully appointed to Joe and Jennifer, with this map would be the same district.
Okay.
Joe got the promotion for Melody, for the council to be from eighty-one.
Oh, okay, so that leaves.
That leaves us the open, which then she can then.
She can then run for that, okay, so that makes everybody happy from that end.
Right.
But does it make the county council happy, and?
If they vote no.
That's kind of like, I have no idea what they're thinking, or how they're thinking.
Do they have to, and maybe this is part of the conversation, do they have to come up with a reason?
Um, I don't know.
If you don't say so.
They do, I didn't think so. The ordinance doesn't say so, it's just like, yes, no.
Right, and we, we talked about this before briefly, that if they don't give a reason. We don't have to give a reason either, we just hand it back and say, we've shown this game all day.
Unless somebody comes up with.
Right, if you have an objection.
Something else.
If there was some sort of objection, fine, state it, if not.
If not, you're.
You can change anything if you're being mysterious on, like, what you don't like, so we would need to know what the objection is.
Either you tell us, or we just keep sending it back and saying, this is what we, is, is that? What we're thinking about?
I think they would have to put out a legal reason. A reason why our map isn't legal, in order to justify sending that to us, and. Through the help of our consultants, we know our map is not legal.
Exactly.
We actually went above and beyond.
What we needed to do.
What we needed to do to make it legal, so.
I get it, but there's always.
The council can appoint somebody anytime between now and August first to replace Joe West. So, that's why, yeah, no idea who that person might be, so. Can we anticipate?
That's kind of what?
That's how they, they pick someone that got a promotion, and say.
Can we anticipate, besides saying, oh, they're, I have to, but can we anticipate why they might be pushed out?
I don't know how, like. Productive that will be, necessarily, I mean.
We can come up with something that's a good sign.
Well, I just, I think that it, like, to me, and it's just my opinion, I'm not saying this as, like, you know, the leader of the pack or anything, I'm just saying, um. I don't want to focus on, like, a defense before we even know that there's a problem. And so, like, taking things as they come, I think we have all been invested enough in this, and know the reasonings for, like, you know, why we voted yes, or why we voted no, or whatever. That I feel confident in all of us to be able to, you know, to either justify, or to take that feedback and think about it critically, so I, I don't want to, you know, think too much about it ahead of time, anticipating and saying no.
I don't think that the optics of saying no to citizen lettiness is horrible.
Well, given what's happened in the county.
Yeah.
And their issues, then, I, I think that we're, like, really good to go. But there's always that little thing in the back of my mind going there, it's gonna be somebody thinking of us, but I don't know what it is.
I think people won't know, I just don't know that it won't pass.
Right, right, and I'm also thinking, I, I think only Helen, Cho, Rita, like, none of the other councillors. Showed up, correct?
Jessica and Jennifer came.
Jennifer came.
Barry came.
Joe came to our unveiling.
Schultz, Schultz has been there.
Schultz, Schultz is pretty much all the time. Helen, I remember Helen Cho.
No, they don't have a vote, but they didn't hear.
Amira came?
Amira didn't come, Latoya didn't come?
Latoya is on her way out.
Latoya was. Oh, that's right. Alright, so, you know, just, so, just saying, so now we at least have a final, you know, we can move on to these next stages, which is exciting. Um, the next item on the agenda is kind of talking about that, um, finalizing the public meetings. And so, we had talked about two different things last time, both the concept, how we want these meetings to feel, how it will look, John Khan proposed modeling it, a lot of similar to eighty-one meetings, where it's just kind of like. Like, we're just up, and people can talk, it's much more informal, um, so we're not, like, setting up a panel at the front, um, and so we had talked about that being an idea. Um, there's no objection, really, that I heard to that, so we had to finalize our concept, if that's what we want to do, and then also, um. Jackie, you're the only one here from your logistics, oh, and Jihan, um, from the logistics, so we just need to finalize where we're gonna have those meetings, we have the dates, so, um. Finalize logistics and concept, I would say. Did it have any dates again?
July twentieth, Wednesday, July twenty, and Thursday, July twenty-first, five thirty, so.
July twentieth and twenty-first.
Five thirty, so like, I mean, we can also discuss five thirty, six thirty, or five thirty, seven thirty. How much is one hour?
I think an hour is more than enough, because past that.
Look, if we don't.
Or you could do, you could do an hour and a half, I mean, that would be the limit. That I would think about, um, but certainly enough time to get everybody to. Make suggestions, and are we gonna have cards and, like, a suggestion box, where they can just?
Need comments?
Comments, or comment box?
Yes, so Jihan has been working on, um, like, the form, and so, do you have that, and John? Started it as well, so we have, we can, we can work on this together if we have a screen, um. So we have the start of a form, that will have printed copies of both in the county council chambers and at those two meetings, with, like, a little suggestion box. But also, it'll be a Google form, so that people can submit it online as well, and. There's, like, a little, like, introduction on the top, that this is merely for the official record. And it is for, like, the next council to take, um, for the next committee to take into consideration. But, like, that these are still, like, the final maps, it's just that you want your, you know, thoughts on the record, and that it will go in our after-action report. So it says that, like, right at the top there.
I just wanted to, let our thoughts, so as we talked about last morning, we won't be answering questions, we won't be having a dialogue.
I think we would need to have a dialogue, but, like, in a more personal way, so if someone asks you a question, certainly answer, but it's not. A question and answer session in what we had done before, where there was, like, there was something that could come from that, necessarily, like, these are final now, and so, like, we can explain the thinking of, like, yeah, this was what this proved, or this is what we were thinking, but. Yeah, I don't think we should just, like, not answer anymore, that would not be good.
No.
No, it was a free plan.
But just within the realm of what we feel comfortable answering, I think.
Yeah.
If somebody asks you something, and I'm, like, I have no clue, then I'm gonna. Send them to somebody else to.
Or, if you say.
Figure that out.
That part of the map you're pointing to, that you don't agree with, like, that's what I didn't, you know, or I did, and here's why. This is very face-to-face conversation to the people, if they have questions, call us or something.
Oh, no.
Or not take an input to change it. This is it. For twenty thirty-one.
This is what, um, we have so far, um, just letter information for the top. And then below are my written comments concerning the final draft, which will be submitted to the Syracuse County Council on August first, twenty twenty-two. By submitting my opinion, I give the Syracuse redistricting, Syracuse City Redistricting Commission permission. To publish what I have written in their final report about the process of redistricting, and the city of Syracuse. Was conducted during the entire time that this commission was active, so it's not just, like, the map. But, you know, people can say, oh, wow, you know, I didn't like the way that this commission ran, or they should have more meetings, or less meetings. And so, um, all of these suggestions will be printed in our after-action report, in a, you know, a chapter, in order to, like, the public's minds.
At those meetings are, I mean, we're gonna have the maps.
Yes.
And can we have kind of a. I don't know if this is a good idea or not, but a little easel-type thing as to, like, with bullet points as to how we got. Here, like, we held so many public meetings, we did all of that, just so that people understand that this was a massive project, and we just didn't. Under, you know, we just didn't undertake this overnight.
Right.
But just so that people have an idea, it's, like, you know, we were selected, blah, 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 blah. We had so many public meetings, and we can even list the places where they were, I mean, it doesn't have to be big, but it just has to be something that says. This was the process that we went through, so that would avoid, maybe some of the questions that would come up?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just suggesting that.
No, I think it's good.
And having that printed as well, and I, and once again, what, what redistricting is, because that seems like we are not responsible for community centers. We're not responsible for, for all this other stuff that popped up, you know, like, that's not what we were supposed to be, this is, this was our branding.
Right.
And everything that we had to follow, and this stuff we had, blah, 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 but I just want to add, Jihan, can you go back to the form?
Yeah.
I just think you should separate out, I would put a dress, and then put new district on a separate line. Yeah.
Scroll down to the bottom of this thing.
Oh, be advised, anonymous comments will not be considered for publication. You may request to have your identifying information excluded from the report.
And so do we need to put a signature line somewhere, so they can do that, and request that, like, I, like a checkbox saying, I request that my.
Comments.
Identifying, yes, at the bottom.
Or they can write it in the comments, that's.
I would prefer checkbox at the bottom.
Or checkbox, yeah. Or check, either one's fine, I just, why, I'm not giving. Nine thousand F words, and forty million dollars, you know.
Well.
You all, uh, whatever.
So should it, should we?
But you sign your name to it, because you're all.
Should we specify, like, when you're saying identifying information to people, are we gonna, like, not include their, their names, or are we just asking addresses?
I, I don't find. Identifying information, so if your address is identifying information.
Well, definitely the address, I understand, but it was, like, if I read this and I saw, like. You're saying anonymous comments will not be considered, but then we're like, but if you want to be anonymous, let us know, is how I'm reading it, so.
Anonymous, in that you're not willing, you know.
To tell us.
You can give us who, who you are.
Right, yeah, so I just would want that, like.
Because Ryan McMahon makes a comment, you need to be able to say, this person's even a resident of the city of Syracuse.
Right.
But it, yeah, as I said, it does say from the report, it says you may request that your identifying information excluded from the example. You've got identifying information, yeah.
Somebody might make a great comment.
Be advised, anonymous comments on this form will not be considered for the public. Does that make sense?
Should we just say accept it?
We're getting a little too crazy with this one.
Yeah, I think.
There's a lot of advisories going down, down here. I think that makes a good point, maybe just say, anonymous comments will not be accepted, and then the other thing is, probably with publishing.
And you have any objections to that?
What was the identifier at the top of the form?
Your name and address, your name and address.
Name and address, well, remember, yeah, I mean, some of them say optional, but.
Definitely name and address are identifying information.
Why don't we need name?
Maybe, it's like we can post, paint from John Doe in Syracuse City, or all.
Some people might not, like, like, for me, Houston would probably want his name in the report. They might not be from Syracuse, right, we, we should edit that, please do not. Just denote it, you know, this person doesn't live in the city.
What if you could have an input into what's?
Alright, is there any word of question, any objection, comments about this form? Would people feel comfortable with this being a final product?
I mean, my whole thing is, I'm not exactly sure why we need to know a person's name, address, time, and get that, and new district, but.
The way that I see it, it's almost like, um, you know, like the comment section of, like, newspapers or something, like, when you can be anonymous, you can say things, and then where do we draw the line? Around, well, this was really inappropriate, so we're not gonna put that in there, versus something that was appropriate, but wasn't, like, signed, like, then we're having to make a decision about something. And so what if someone says something inappropriate, then they'll sign their name, that would, we just, like, have a reason to, like, okay, well, that, we don't publish the anonymous stuff.
Well, one, I won't hit a reason, but, um. If they say something inappropriate, and they sign their name, they're like. Are we gonna publish what they say?
Yeah, then if they want to be charged, then I'm, I'm happy to publish it and put their name next to it, but.
What if we said may not, instead of will? At our public meetings, the first thing we say, then anybody getting up to the microphone destroys that app for yourself.
Right, like a public meeting, you would, I got a mic or something.
And this is just.
It's just the same, yeah.
If this would give you the, not to say, well, no, we're not gonna take it. Got it, and may not, so.
Well, that being said, I think in our report, we should say, I mean. Objection, comments, and receipts.
We could have a little, a little blur swing of, uh.
You think we can be on the counter?
Just let folks know. We received twenty-eight comments that we cannot publish.
Foul language, totally inappropriate. I don't have a phrase for it.
Publish all of the comments that we gave that are, um, you know, appropriate, or whatever, I mean, what happens if we receive them?
I mean, it's gonna be.
It's unlaudatory, but, uh. It's a, yeah.
I think everyone should be heard, they care enough to submit this form, like, they, they care enough to come. Especially this will be, like, a digital document, I mean, somewhere or somewhere, I guess it'll be printed, but, like, it doesn't matter, we have a hundred pages, like.
Okay.
We have a hundred pages.
Now, we're gonna have public meetings with the maps. Um, easels, I'm assuming, they print in maps, but are we gonna do anything online for people who can't quite come?
These will be Google forms.
Okay.
And so we're gonna be posting on social medias, and our website, all of that kind of stuff, with links to be able to comment online if you don't go to the public meetings.
Good transition.
Yes.
Um, press release. I don't know if that's on your list.
It's not, but.
Okay. Good transition. Um, press release. Talk about it. Right, and send PDFs of the maps to all the outlets, and. Anything you also do is, um. Your working goal that, or like, or use, if you want to request, you include, um, our email address. To save useless stuff sometimes, I know you play the middle man a lot.
Don't we have a?
What's the date to get on the council agenda?
Don't we have a central email where people can address comments?
We have a commission email.
Right, because. I only have one email address left, since my computers bunkers, and I have no wish to.
No, no, I was referring, no, 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 I was referring to, uh, when she sends the email for the press release, to, like, syracuse.com, and change the line. Um, a lot of times she ends up playing the middle man for interview requests.
Okay.
It's that when she, she also did, was including three or four of us.
Well, then you can do.
Okay.
They, they, they get it directly.
Right, well, yeah, alright, great, thank you. We'll check with everyone who is on that, like, you know, um, that publicity thing that they're, that's their niche, um, make sure that everyone's.
In order to be on the county council agenda for August first, we have to submit our map. And our statistics to the county council office on July twentieth. So it can be included in the study session on July twenty-seventh, which precedes the official county council meeting on August first. So, my question to the group is, do we. We voted, these are our final maps, do we schedule a press release, like Jason says, for. Before, well, we're in the comment period from July fifth, nineteenth, but. Do we officially release it before active comment period?
Well, once it. Yeah, so like, I was thinking, like, this week.
Okay, that's, that's my, that's my, I just, all these wheels are spinning.
It's gonna be a weird weekend.
Once it, like, boards everything. Once it goes in the county council agenda, we're.
I don't, I've never actually asked, I just assume, we have permission to, just like, have a comment box and easels in the comment, like, we, have permission? Do they know that they, that we're doing that? Are they cool?
We mentioned it.
Well, you know, we should, we should just, like, make it legit and official.
Yeah.
Because we're gonna be like, hey, we.
You know what, don't.
I'm putting, uh, the map that we decided on in the county council chambers, is that what this is?
Don't they lock that door, should we, should we put in, like, the hallways?
I, I think, yeah, in front of the.
The door's always open.
Is it really?
Yeah.
I haven't seen it all better. But we have a.
We'll say, if, if they end up closing it for any reason, they can just put easel in the hallway.
Yeah.
Reconstruction. That's, that seemed like the most logical place to have it in the public, more to consider, because of no severe effects.
The public comment is July fifth through July nineteenth, is that right?
Yep. That's when we'll be taking online submissions of that form, and whatever people choose to hand over on. We're gonna print, like, two hundred and fifty copies, and wherever we don't use, we'll bring it to the twenty, uh, on the first, so people can recount, and say, we don't want to rely on our members.
I think a lot of people will comment online. I'm sure, so, we'll get a good mix of both, I believe, so, um. So, another question that I, I don't think I have hammered out. I know that we're talking about printing, like, each of the five districts on big maps for at least our meetings, are we still doing that, or is it just like the one they want?
I prefer, I still have it in my hands, I might do, and it's hard to print out, I'd like to have not a huge room, but, um.
It's a good idea.
I have, I have people, and they have questions, so I can't show them nothing.
We've got a big enough space to, to enter the public meetings, where we can have six easels.
Yeah.
People can kind of mill around and talk and say.
Because you get the detail of the street names, it's hard.
Right, no, I think that's.
Small with the. Are you able to get one smaller, John? Just, I don't wanna, I don't need a large one, I need one that I can better make sense of it, just, you know. I think that that'll be public knowledge after July fifth, you know, if you can't get online, give it to them.
Do you want like little printouts?
Printouts, eight and a half by eleven, if that's what, I believe, just has to involve, this is the outside, District Five, District A, but if you're calling it, that'll be fine.
Can you move in the numbers? Okay, so we're talking about doing in order to have a big map, a big map with C. And then five and five, all other maps. And we'll of course have printouts of, just like we did for this last round, we had printouts of every individual district and the whole map. And that way, if you want to go into your community with your specific district, you certainly can. We'll have those small printouts on regular, you know, paper. And then the actual nice prints for our meetings. And then a print of the large one at, uh.
Can, can I ask Jackie for you, can we, is it through the month eight and a half by eleven, because this through the month, um, eleven by seventeen, you can fold them and they come down eight and a half by eleven and we open it up, it just gives you more detail. And it's like printing, it's like printing two, you know.
It's like legal says.
This, well, yeah, yeah.
No, eleven by seventeen is two of them.
Yeah, two of those, not, legal is, um, eight and a half by fourteen.
No, so.
The ledger.
Gihan and C is at Nader's office, so what, we don't want to pay for him that way?
Oh.
So I don't, is that what they're. Yeah, but so when we tried to print it like the, maybe it's plan B P, it didn't show the whole district on that, like the lemon, that longer one. So then we just did the regular sized paper, that's why we were trying and then it was not. But if we do want to do that, we can just take this little printout, the whole kind of costs money, but yes, we got to.
We have the money. And so.
I just want to be sure that everybody can see.
Yeah.
Their streets, yeah, because that's gonna be a massive question is, where does my street fall within all of this?
Jackie, that, that's a little bit better, I think, for you? And then you can just fold them like that, but then it'll be.
So that's a ledger size?
That's ledger.
And so I'm gonna assume there's also gonna be a PDF.
Yes.
And I don't like Josh's Google map, I mean, like.
That sounds nice.
That was really.
For that one to, like, create the crazy over.
I, I'm still waiting for my refund on my two hundred plus dollars. We get PDF together, untapped, I just covered the whole duty, so I just like to have something to explain because two common councils are gonna hear from our group and I don't want that they have any questions on that hour group because I'm gonna distance myself while this goes through. But I have concern. So that being said, I just need that and then make you dissect how you want.
Josh, Josh said he would like to know how the commission wants the district's numbered and he will need the dimensions commission wants, so it can be easily printed out. Right, that would be great if we get have it formatted, so it can be printed on that, at least a PDF copy each of the districts are printed on that legal ledger size.
If he formats it for this size, then it'll look good only on this side.
Right, we would need two formats then. Is that okay, Josh? I know it's.
Yeah, 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 no, it's fine, just let me know very precisely what you want, so I can generate.
Okay, can we go back to the number of districts?
Otherwise, they'll get.
We legally have to go back, you know.
I, I, so if we didn't get there, he's still walking, I'm just trying to find out, yeah, fine.
So, Mur, so what I mean by formatting is, um, like Graham says, like, what he, what he sends us is usually like for like a regular sheet paper or something like that. But when Gihan tried to print it on that big ledger size, like it gets like distorted. And so I kind of want both, I want formatting that can go on that big ledger size, but I also would like just like the regular formatting that goes on that thing, so. It's actual work for Josh, but.
Can Josh do us both PDFs and PNG or JPEGs? Because on Facebook, you can't load a PDF, you can lift the link, but if you want to actually put a picture on, you need a, a JPEG or PNG. For social media.
That's easy enough to convert, yeah.
Yeah, and we need to.
We'll add that to the list. But that is also something that we need to decide is how we want these districts numbered, because legally they have to be numbered, we went back and forth. Can we leave it to the common council to number and they, and the answers know that we have handled our draft numbers? So in our draft map, it has been, we started with A on the south side and gone around. But the old map started at the top and went counterclockwise. And so we need to kind of decide if we want to kind of stick with that, what people know, or if we want to, like what we did with the numbers, turn everything on its, on its head and let that be what it is. It's up to you to be.
Yeah, probably let's not read up the wheel up, I think.
And that's what I'm thinking, I think that people feel more comfortable going, well, I'm a district one and this is what it used to look like, this is what it still looks like now. So I think people feel more comfortable with having the numbers as they were.
But the problem is we can't do that, because before it was something in the middle and four around it. And now it's five meaning like a pie crust, right? So if we start with one being the north side and go counterclockwise, the south side will be three.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's really.
So it's unreliable, right? We can either go counterclockwise or clockwise. We can get two to be the same as they used to be.
Right, but not all of them.
At all.
So what would be easier for people to understand? Based on the changes that we've made.
Yeah, I kind of like the way Josh delineated it, he made C, District One, B, District Two, E, so you're going one, two, three, over to E, and then down.
E is like this one?
Yeah, it's there, so this is.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, no, that's like university, okay.
So that was, which was five before.
So which way are we going then?
So it's kind of that importance.
Well, it's.
Six that I can.
That is closest to the original numbers.
Okay.
Right, so this is, this is one, two, three, four, five.
Okay, so it's better going clockwise.
Yeah, but it's closer to the original way things were numbered.
Okay.
That approach, but.
No, that's fine, just, I just want to understand it, because if somebody asks a question, I want to be able to answer it.
I think it's somewhat arbitrary that we went back and forth, back and forth. And I hope that what people are comfortable with is sixty-eight.
Well, some people aren't going to be comfortable with any of this. And I think we need to accept that, that like, some of these lines have moved and moved in ways that some people are gonna love and some people are not gonna love. And if your district changed, like it's going to feel foreign and uncomfortable when you're talking about it, that is just a part of it.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't, I don't think there's some magic way that we can do this that everyone will be comfortable with.
But I love the comment that the woman from Common Cause made, like part of the problem, some of the, part of, part of the thing that people are complaining about are because these lines haven't been drawn in almost thirty years. And so these, this process actually has made this, hopefully gotten these neighbors a little bit more equitable, I think we need to remember that when we're talking to people. Too, I thought that was a great comment.
Do they have any strong feelings?
I think it should be known, that's it, one, two, three, it doesn't matter where the numbers are, people understand what district they're in. If they know that, they will look with a number of understanding that the lines have changed.
Right, that actually is going to be heard, yes.
Right, so I, I propose, or I guess I move, that we adopt the numbers as they are on this thing being displayed right now, which is not clockwise or counterclockwise, it'll be a little lumpy, but it seems to be pretty close to the current.
Right, we have.
Or a bunch of people.
It's only four then that are the same.
We just have to get rid of, all right, so about seconds.
Um, any discussion on this?
Just your word that it's a little lumpy, you know, jumping. Yeah, it's not logical, but it is.
But if you, it makes, once you look at it in the broader view, I think it'll make sense.
Once, once it's on there, that's what it's gonna be, so it's gonna really make a whole lot of difference.
Yeah.
I mean, the last met was arbitrary.
The only thing that's truly, truly different on this is District E slash C. Um, because a lot of like the replacements are the same for one, two, five.
You took up the, the four.
Right, yeah, so we just kind of moved that over, so it's not actually all that different.
It's not all that different, yeah.
Just more equitable. So we will now vote on Graham and Mabat's motion, all in favor using the numbers that Josh has already assigned, raise your hands.
I have the screen.
Yeah. Mary, okay, um, any opposed?
I don't think I'm gonna vote. She's still on.
Pretty good.
Okay, all right, it's passed, great, great, all right. We're moving and grooving here, all right. So, um, for the, the other part of the public meetings, we have our, I haven't heard any dissent in terms of the concept of it just being a little bit more casual, these things are up with the common, things appear more meaningful. Logistics. Jackie, um, have you guys, Jackie and Gihan, have you finalized any, you know, sites?
So, yeah, um, so the, what we said last Friday was pastime and outside innovation center, but it depends on if we want to have like that virtual aspect again, or if you do not want that. So if we don't want that, we can do, um, instead of pastimes, we can do McChesney community center, which doesn't have wifi, but we can have it there. And then I'm just awaiting the answer from Mr. Elchaba on the south side innovation center, which I feel like is the best thing for.
Right, I feel like south, the south is like, I think that's a good.
I think that would be a really, a really good choice and just put it on the south side, it's great parking.
I have a question, but McChesney, why don't we just bring a hotspot?
I have a hotspot, I don't think that's.
Yeah.
McChesney told us that pastime L.
Cause pastime is too small, they said we don't need to close it in, John.
Oh, so. Very close, is that New Frances's? I don't see my.
Yeah, yeah, but pastime is, just take pastime off.
Cause they only call twenty-five people.
Yeah, that's.
And with us, that's like ten to twelve, just if we all show up, right?
And I'm thinking we'll just, Gerald, Josh, Jeff, be on the laptop.
Chilling in the corner.
People want to talk, so they can, they can talk to the laptop.
Yeah.
Cause it's, it's very individual.
I, I can't imagine, I mean, there was almost no interaction in our other meetings where we were supposed to, you know, be going back and forth, but we think of that, like they're, they're the muscle behind us, but we're the people who have made these decisions, so if there's something that we need to ask them about, sure, but. They're just gonna chill in the corner.
Right, but I'm thinking Step Guide, actually, the South Side Innovation Center, bus route, parking, walking distance.
Same thought of it all?
They, it's all there, I'm not quite sure about McChesney.
They use that as an early voting site.
Yeah, it's one hall, it's very.
It is.
It's a grand middle school.
Yeah.
What's for parking?
Okay, what was that?
What's for parking?
That's where they would put us, like if they put us in the gym or something, it's gigantic.
Yeah, and then, um, South Side Innovation Center has a huge like core room, so easily you can get like a hundred plus people, so that's not gonna be a problem.
Okay, do you speak to Eljaba?
Yeah, she said get, talk to the others and get back to me, but Jackie was the one who brought up South Side Innovation.
They want to talk to Duncan Wright, Joe, and Duncan Wright, cause Eljaba and SU, they, let you know somebody in SU. You may have, that should be a miss, you may or may not with Eljaba, I was just doing about.
There's certainly pressure on anybody coming up too, but.
Since they own everything around us, so you'd be better, I mean, lease everything around us, you know somebody there? Would the Office of Community Engagement be involved in that? Shouldn't. All right, cause I know that had a.
Why were you doing that for so long?
Cause they share the parking lot, to make sure that the offices, cause he'll use that excuse, everybody rent these offices, they're somebody in. But TNT gets it, but nobody else needs to get that place.
Well, the Hundred Black Men have an office.
Yeah, they have an office, but I already asked him, he said he doesn't have the input. But if the Office of Community Engagement does, then I can reach out. All right, so I said.
Is there, is there backup locations?
Until COVID.
So I don't feel comfortable publicizing that this is where a meeting will be unless it's COVID.
Yeah, don't until, yeah, we gotta reach out further, ask you that way they can put a fire, maybe on Eljaba's behind because since this COVID, they give some convenient excuses. We tried to get it for political debate and now we're just with the mayor and whoever else was running. We don't know if it came with COVID, we had to wait tracing, it was.
Is there a backup location for the south meeting because of?
As at, um, Salt City, but Salt City has all those, even though, once again, Salt City is who we know, we can get in and we ate, we drank there, there was anything.
But we thought we didn't want Salt City to park.
Yeah. Parking's an issue there. Parking could be an issue, but what I mean, who are we talking about's gonna have all of these cars, it's walkability, it's the bus across the street. And it's after the hours that they even enforce it, you know, it's after four thirty, there aren't any people out there giving tickets.
There's no parking.
So the capacity for that is what, John, he's, what they tell you.
I think it's like forty fifty, we're gonna be.
Yeah, cause we have fifty.
For Salt City, so it's gonna be in the D's community room, they have the wifi and TV.
Yeah.
Um, it's just a parking issue, we cannot use their parking lot, that's where they're hidden, but, um, streets, we can talk to the mayor at, at parking.
For, for the South, for Salt City?
For South City.
Then you either go back to the library, which is literally across the street.
The library doesn't have late hours, though.
Yes, they do, on that night, they do have late hours.
Till seven, okay.
Till seven, on the fourth, they do have late hours. On that particular night, but they do. No, that's Tuesday.
So that space, Sino and Rayner still, by their place.
Gihan.
Public meetings space, they don't.
Oh, Mercy Works?
Or Mercy Works.
Oh, good, okay, I'll give you that now, they have another place. I, I do things in this community, so I'm not just sitting, I have, they don't loan anything out to the public, that's her voicemail, she told me that. But maybe you guys are not, you know somebody.
I, I have, I have, um, Nazis, I have Nazis cell phone, but remember my thing, I want to do Mercy Works on Instagram. Um, and parking is a little pumpy over there, but they do have Wi-Fi.
We have the Innovation Center as our first choice, that's where we want to go. But if we can't hear by, I mean, like, if we want to get a press release out this week, like, we have to like have these things booked by this week, so we can say, here's where our meetings are. So if we can't get that booked by this week, I think we should abandon ship and go with one of these other options, whether it's Salt City Market or the library.
I will definitely mall, um, for the S and I C Innovation Center.
I've called for, I've, he just has to talk to others, he said he'll get back to me within a week, so.
Okay.
So he, that, that's, what, is that this week, should we know by?
This week, this is for Friday.
All right, just let me know, because I can always back up.
And you've already talked to Gail at, at OCPL, right? So that's our, okay, cause we're gonna be, I, I think OCPL is a better location than Salt City, that, where you know, though, actually, though in some ways, actually, it might not be better, because if you already have these pages, people might wander in and eat and add it to the maps.
And we, we've already talked to Salt City.
Yeah, it's booked at Salt City, so it's currently booked and will like hand it to you at the other place.
Okay, so that's our backup, because it's already there. So we have Salt City as a backup, Syracuse Innovation Center as our primary that we're hoping to hear from this week, but if we don't, it's their loss and no boss in our.
Which Salt City also has a lot of clientele, they have a lot of foot track, so that might work as well as the library.
We will all just have our own Salt City parking.
It'll be, I'm, I'm down, it's, it's gonna be fine from behind the street, it's not that challenging.
It's, it's not, because if you don't park on South Carolina, you can go further down from the, uh, bus station, park by Central Tech. There's tons of choir being, there's a lot there.
Street, um, worn street, there's plenty of parking on the street down there.
I mean, you know, if you need to make some, you can pretty much park in where I say, yes, God.
All right, so we are set on those locations, we know which, which day is which.
Which, so, um, out one would be on Wednesday, July twentieth, so, um, S and I C or Salt City would be on Wednesday, July twentieth, Thursday would be. So, um, SSIC or Salt City would be on Wednesday, July twentieth, Thursday would be. Well, I think it can depend since we're switching it around, and we're not doing pastime. Basically, I explained it because of pastime by game, but if we're not doing that, we can decide.
Leave it, leave the south side on Wednesday, and let's do McChesney on Thursday.
Okay. Alright, so can you, one of those dates by?
Twenty and twenty-one July.
Twenty and twenty-one July, so twenty, I think it's about Salt City.
Salt City or SSIC.
Okay.
And then the twenty-first, it could be, uh, McChesney.
Jahana's a Muslim, aren't you? You use your Muslim influence with Elchaba.
Oh, yeah.
I know this guy. I forgot about that. I give him the lead.
I don't know.
Well, use what you can.
I will. Okay, so, great, we have some logistics and concepts figured out for new business, it's no kind of old business, but, um, this after-action report, so we need to get started on identifying some of those chapters. Have, have that and Graham started at all, had any conversations?
Absolutely.
Okay, fine, that's fine. So I think, um, being able to identify just like certain areas, like I know, like I've been thinking about, like just like different things, so, um, I don't know if we want to just like kind of brainstorm here, and like we can just, that would give you guys something to traction?
I just need to set that in start, I haven't, I haven't given it anything at all.
Like just think about like the different, um, stages that we went through, um, you know, like selecting, like even looking at like the software and how we were looking at different softwares and consulting people and things like that. Um, there should be a chapter on, you know, diversity, equity, and inclusion, um, and how that has morphed and how that's been a part of our process. I think just having sections on like all these things would be important.
I think going, once again, like, you know, we're gonna, if we're gonna have an ESO with like bullet points on the process, then that should be part of the after-action and report, like the process, how we went through, so the common council, especially those people who didn't come to the meetings, understand that this is what we did and how we got here.
Yeah, which, that's.
Yeah, I mean, in some sense, that's one of the main purposes of the report, I think.
Exactly.
The main report is to tell common council what we did, and the public what we did. Then the other big purpose for it is to ourselves ten years from now.
Right.
The next commission, so that they don't start from zero like we, because do you remember how much it sucked? Do you remember how little we knew at the beginning? Starting from zero was terrible.
Yeah, and then I lost the recommendation, so we can know this has to be done in ten years, but don't start.
I mean, we were looking at another city that is after action, that was, that was, gave us most traction first.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I think part of the point, not written by them, should be on the consultants and how they contributed to what we were doing, providing the legal framework and, uh, and the grunt work of not making it.
Right, so what about the overview redistricting, uh, like the history of the, of the previous process? We may not have any information on that at all. But I can, we need to talk about the previous map. Um, then, um, the process, which included working with the consultants, all the things that we had to take into account, all the laws, the mandates, we had things that we've identified for ourselves that were priority. Um, then, inside that process could also be, um, then how we ran the meetings, we collected comments, then we have like a list of recommendations, and then we have our, and then in the back would just be all these comments.
Yeah. There are gonna be a bunch of appendices, all, all of the various graphs, the maps, all of the, you know, uh, what was it? Oh, Colleen came with a draft, a map that we didn't even, it wasn't even in the EDC, we'll just put that in an appendix.
I just texted everybody the Austin, uh, link to the PDF of the Austin final report, and we should just plagiarize the whole of it, honestly. Um, the promise of Austin organizing, because it's, it's really, it's a good report. Sean?
Did they, did they have a section on, because I was thinking of the criteria that was used? We provide community of interest.
It's, it's extensive, I'm sure, it's in there, it's very long, just take a look at it and if you agree, we can certainly model ours, we not, we just would plagiarize, but model ours. We didn't hear plagiarize.
It was on there, it was on there.
Of course, you, there you go.
Yes, yes. Would we include the agendas and the minutes of what we did? I don't know if that's pertinent or too much.
Spoilable, right?
It is. I mean, it's a public meeting, so everybody's too much of a, but should we include that those messages for the final report? I don't know if it's gonna be like, you know, a fifty-page final report or. But these are all online, correct?
They are.
So can we put a link maybe to where you can find it?
There are them there anyway.
Right, so we should just link that, link that in, so that if you're really interested. Yeah, I don't want, yeah, I, I'm not thinking that we want to put it, because I was trying to organize my.
Jeanne takes extensive minutes now, so.
Here's the thing, I've, I've been putting everything in a notebook, and I have a pile like this big, so I just don't want that pile to be the report. But if we can link it so that people who really want to know the details.
Maybe that's one of the appendices. So in the Austin report, they have the district counselors, do you guys want your bios in here with your names and pictures? Thank you.
No way.
Okay, so we just have a listing, but they, yeah, they have.
Just a listing of the names.
Yeah, they have this, this huge bio of the.
Alright.
Am I the only one whose address have changed? So I'm obviously in one district and now I'm in another, or? Okay.
Yeah, maybe. My, my, my district changed, but I didn't move, first section moved.
Yeah, I think if we just have the names of the people who were on the committee, because that gives a base. But I, I don't really see any need to put in any like extra information.
I just asked, because in this thing, the, there's extensive bios.
We tried to do this in the beginning with social media, and y'all were not having it, so I'm not gonna try to do it again. So, nobody wanted to.
You know, we could do, there was a nice group picture that they, everybody just, it was a nice group picture.
You remember that picture?
Yeah.
I'm saying that that is a reasonable question, considering everything else. So, okay, I'm gonna be a problem. In this report, because during the course of this process, there have been folks who have. Please just read this. I think that it's important that that's put on the table as well during this, because I don't want folks out there to think that this was a unanimous body, and everybody was like, oh, we're one hundred percent behind this. Everybody was, so as part of the record, as it were, that, um, validates what some people, right or wrong, out there are thinking, that individuals get to get their last word in this, yes, ma'am.
So I would say, the fact that we'll have a link to all the meeting minutes, all that stuff is in the meeting minutes. Uh, and I think when we talk about the process, we are most certainly not gonna read up the fact that this was a process that sometimes was a struggle for us. I mean, I think you guys are all gonna, I think maybe like Graham and I may take responsibility for writing most of it. This is something that's gonna be very much an edible, an equitable document, all of you have your feedback. And I think there's, there's no way that any of us would attempt to not be honest about this process, or maybe that also interject our passion about it. And that's, that is what made us us, and that's what made this process, I think, very valuable to us, and how committed we were to. So no, I, not, we had no, but thank you for saying that, because.
Well, I mean, I think it's important that, that folks say in their own words, whatever that looks like.
Right, I agree.
Yeah, so does that mean that we made like individual statements, or?
You did a choice, I think.
Just a joint statement saying, okay.
I think we're all on the same.
Well, what about like a vote breakdown? Like, oh, like, so like, I would have guessed, this is why, I don't even know. It is in the meeting minutes, but like I think that it is important, what Charles is saying, for the people who did not agree, for their place to be recorded, just like anyone else is, or to be.
And in their own words, too.
So maybe we can put that like in a paragraph or two with those quote dissent, of dissent, like, you know.
There's, there are gonna be several opportunities for this, like we voted, for example, on whether to have a majority-minority district.
Exactly.
We voted on this, and it wasn't unanimous. And we, we literally put the results of the vote, and, you know, find a few paraphrases unless Bob's willing to step in and contribute, but, and also, and be up to each person who dissented, whether they want their name attached to them. It can also be said, this wasn't unanimous, some commission members raised concern in that blah, blah, blah.
I think, I think the logic of unanimity is not really that the two people that in the vote, who might have patched disagreements along the way, that we're not reflected in the vote. And it's also important that, as you said, ten years from now, this is how meetings operate. This is a diverse group, and there's not gonna be consensus on anything in this given thing. So it, it's not just those particular issues that resulted in the final vote.
So you know what, now that I'm thinking, if, we don't necessarily like do a whole bio thing like they did in the Austin vote, but maybe, maybe each of us submit a paragraph on what this process meant to us, or maybe that's what we talk about, the areas that we struggled with.
And that's important to us, and that's what we focused on.
Yeah. Where, where we had disagreements, that kind of thing, and that can be, it's a, like, that's our bio, that's our. Yeah, like, yes.
I like that, that's really good.
And it takes it off of us personally, about us and our role and work. I like that. Alright, so, we'll bring starting session, like we have something to start with at least. And you'll make that a Google Doc and share it?
Sure.
It's incredible. But we'll give them a head start to.
Is the timeline, when do they want to have this thing done?
It's with August first, that has to be on the common council.
No, 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 this won't be the last.
You gotta, you gotta make sure they start it first.
I just kept hearing that thing, so I was like, that's for the baby, because this would be after action, so after the map.
So we can edit for the map of the.
So the map is August first?
That's August fourth, it's running.
Okay, yeah, just wanted to be sure that it wasn't played about today, because that would be like awful.
And then one thing, um, Josh has put in the comments to rename the plan, it definitely needs to be something other than Plan C.
Yeah, right.
Uh, might be suggesting proposed plan, is there any other, we want to have a final version, or Syracuse City redistricting proposed plan, and, because Jeanne's gonna have to send this to the printer, and once we print it, that's it. So, I think we need some consensus about what we want to call this.
Yeah, let's do it in draft.
Well, this is our final map.
Final map.
I'm all for love it or leave it, but.
Let's go blunt, though.
Yeah, just a little blunt. But, you know, there's, yeah, there's always gonna be somebody who's gonna have some, like usually for the final somewhere, so. I'm sure it's not related, I'm sure.
Let's just stay away from.
Graham, Graham has a.
I, yeah, definitely stay away from draft.
The ordinance says, the commission shall then vote on a proposed final plan.
There we go, final plan.
Proposed final.
There we go.
I get it.
I have one suggestion, proposed sounds like draft, and if we're proposing, we, we might not need proposed in the final draft, might be.
It's actually a little bit antithetic, because we've gone on and on about how these last two hearings are not for changes to happen, they're just for public comment. But the ordinance kind of gets a little sketchy there, it says, the commission shall vote on proposed final plan, and then shall hold two subsequent public hearings, one word comes out. The commission then shall be finished with all hearings and adopt a final plan. It will then send the final plan to the city clerk for review and approval by the common council.
So we call this one proposed, and then once we go through public comment, then it's like final.
Yeah.
Yeah, before we. Right, so the now the council, right?
Yep.
So for now, it'll be proposed final plan, perfect.
Okay. And then after that, it becomes final, so then final plan after. After the two public hearings.
It's saying proposed final plan for a reason, it didn't say it's final plan, meaning that proposed just means that, after your public comment, you get to go back and take a look at it again before it goes to common council. But it sounds like, okay, it's already a done deal. And, and in fact, you have some ordinance that says it doesn't have to be a done deal.
We can do anything we want.
Uh, does that, is that what it says?
The only thing that the common council can't do is change anything on the plan.
So before it goes.
Before common council.
Right.
But if we say proposed final plan, and then we have two public hearings, and we listen to some of the suggestions that people make, and if you decide to move forward with those suggestions, then that's us to us. But what we submit to the common council is what we consider our final.
I get that. So then, since that's up to us, that's good to know, because that means it opens a door for yet another vote. Because I'm still not sitting well, with this Smith Lane thing.
Also, we got proposed and.
Sure.
The changes.
Exactly, after the hearings.
So technically, yeah, seriously.
Yeah. I'm just going by my view, Paul says like, this is what we're proposing to the council, not like, I'm proposing this to you, I'm saying, this is what it is for you, we're proposing it to the common council.
It has to be some compelling, I mean, compelling.
Massive, yes. Mm-hmm. To make it to a vote map, and to.
Compelling. I think it would be nice.
Well, I see that Josh says you have one last opportunity after the hearings to make any changes you see fit. Um, and there may be something that comes up at the public hearings that we're like, you know what, uh, yeah, that might make some sense. Uh, but if we decide not to change it, that's within us, not to change it.
Anyone have anything else?
So I can make a motion that we stick with that, and it's just proposed final draft? Or do I have to make a motion for that to happen, that you just did?
No, because that's in the ordinance, this one, yeah.
That's already in the ordinance, so that's the one which. Oh, my God.
And, and Graham, you, you said that there's no requirement that the council has to provide reasons, uh, whether, I mean, if they don't like it, I think it just.
So it says.
I think that's, that's interesting.
The city common council may not change the plan, it shall not be subject to amendments, must be voted up or down. If the final plan is defeated, the city clerk will send it back to the commission on behalf of the common council, detailing the effect it's due.
Detailing, there you go, there you go.
Okay, that makes sense. Because we can always say.
Yep.
And then the next sentence is, the commission shall revise the plan and send it back to the council until approved, which means.
We can keep going.
Do it until we get bored.
This may become our, our parallel universe, Elip experience.
We're here for it.
Yeah, no, but.
Twilight, so.
Ordinance.
No, I'm not asking. So, I don't want to open a can of worms. Okay.
No, go ahead, say it, because I'm gonna say something that may open a can of worms.
Jackie, I'm confused, the, the, the thing that you're, the sticking point for you.
Smith Lane, Smith.
Sure, yeah. But is that, was that different in draft B? It was still there, like that in draft B?
In Smith Lane, as opposed to Toomey Avenue, I think, I'm gonna take something from Josh, when he says that the squeeze needs to be worked for Jews. And so, Smith Lane is not, and I won't even, I'll say with the voting aspect of it all, but it's just a problematic housing area. We have Valentine apartments, already problematic, so what we're looking at is concentrated poverty in lives. Concentrated poverty, and if we're getting away from voting, so I won't talk about the voting habits, I would just say in terms of Skyline wasn't the only biggest thing, Green, this particular, um, realtor owns all of these different properties scattered around the city. St. Vincent is one of them. Um, they don't own Valentine, and Valentine is a rival with that kind of constant negative, um, element.
St. Vincent is one of them, um, they don't own Valentine, and Valentine is a rival with that kind of constant negative, um, element there. If we're getting away, keep saying majority-minority, that means no concept to us, because minority can be anything, females, Hispanic, it can be anything. So concentrated poverty is what we're trying to move away from, when that asks me to solve the ills of the world, but we already have problems with our issue, with our rights being rolled back. So if we continue this pattern, we take it away from downtown, because downtown is where they're doing whatever they do down there east side. We're valid, we're, um, there was one apartment building, and that's not Smith Lane, that's Moore Avenue. Going up Moore Avenue, Smith Lane doesn't start to those apartments, and then it goes over to Jamesville, Jamesville intersection, which becomes the east side, so what's the problem with giving, Josh said it would be no problem, it was just a matter of switching out things. What's the problem with taking this concentrated issue, which I have documented, this place has just all kinds of problems with the law and, and laws, just things going on, because such a mix of concentrated people there that I drop their group probation, I know that personally, not an opinion, and it's, we have enough of that, we just have enough of it living on the South Side. So that being said, if there's an option with Toomey Abbott, which we're already fighting hard to get their voting votes back inside of there, because it's a, it's a senior place, and it's a place for gathering, and people who have historically had things in common, vote them in the carriage house, you cut them out, put them over in that east side district, and what we're left with is still this concentrated poverty issue. Do they vote? Okay, we'll stay with the voting, but I would say not, the mass majority, I would, it's never an all or nothing kind of game, but the mass majority, it's in the reports, you can look it, you can Google it for yourself. So this Smith Lane is, is not true, Smith Lane start, begins and ends at that apartment complex, and then it goes to Jamesville, which is prized real estate, and that goes to the east side, so give them this also. Since Valentine Apartments, or Ballotee, or whatever it was, was already added back in, it'd be no problem, there's no private houses on that strip. That again, is not true, you know, and you go there and see it for yourself, or I took pictures for anybody who's been interested in looking at it. Yes, John?
Anthony, we had an hour and a half debate about this extension.
Well, she asked me what my concern.
Okay, I'm telling you, we had an hour and a half debate about this Friday, we held a vote.
You held a vote based on information?
We're not reopening this.
Okay, when she asked, I'm not doing, well, period for now.
We, we.
No, 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 excuse me, she asked me, and it's.
We had a final vote, we're done, these are the masses.
You know what, I'm gonna say it again, and this is not for you, okay, so don't take it personal. You can be a final vote all you want, that says that we actually come back before it goes to common council, the proposal, the ordinance says that. Now, if you don't wanna vote on it, it's fine, I'm a vote, I'm a, I'm a voter.
You change the people's votes on this commission, everyone votes.
You don't, I don't have to, I, I don't have to, unless there's a part in there for the commission that says I can't go to common council and voice my concern.
You absolutely can do whatever you want.
So was, was Toomey Abbott a part of the South Side after the war? In District B, in draft?
Toomey Abbott and Carriage were a part of the South Side, I don't care what draft it was on, it's been a part of.
Never on the map, never on the map.
Okay, fine, and because it was an oversight, according to Josh. So, now that it's not an oversight, which that would have been a question mark anyway, because certainly we're gonna rally for that. Right, we have a historical issue right here, that is, is absolutely people of common ground, so it's not a problem, if you don't wanna hear it, it's not something new that came up, that's not a problem, I vote like everybody else votes, I have a very limited.
I'm just wondering why we didn't hear about this in the weeks, and we.
But you have never, never talked about it. Because I allowed David Rufus and others to get up and talk about it, Mr. Pierce, do you remember?
We took David Rufus's suggestions.
I absolutely.
We put that into the map, that's more a change.
Right, but he said Smith Lane was not even an option, so he said, I wouldn't have talked about Smith Lane or Toomey Abbott. I asked him specifically, David, I took notes and, I could be old, but it doesn't really, doesn't, it, it's neither here nor there. I know what I wrote, and I'm not going to come up with something that wasn't, if you chose not to write it, that's you. And it wasn't just one meeting, it was over the time of meetings, Toomey Abbott has got something new to any of us. And so me not being able to read a map, which I've been saying from day one, Toomey Abbott labeled, but we have it big, and on a nineteen-hour YouTube with that. So that being said, I understand what a vote process is, I am a community activist, and I plan to do what community activists do. I'm not gonna sit in these space, fuel space, and talk about ten years, none of us know how long we'll be on this earth, ten years? What has been done to this community that I now live in and have been invested in is more than a ten-year process. And so give them another ten years, okay, then I'm gonna be to your disadvantage, because I like that option, I'm going to use it. The juice better work this week.
I wanted to be clear while we're only hearing about this now, we haven't heard screams of Toomey, Toomey Abbott for months.
Well, perhaps.
I just wanted to, you couldn't read the map, I'm not.
Well, did you hear me not say, there, there you go, so I'm looking at a map, and I live in the South Side and didn't even know where my street was. You kept asking about ITC, you know, these people kept bringing it up, if people keep saying I don't understand something, is it because they're dumb, or is it because they just make it clear, make it, put it where goats can get it? Goats eat at the wound, and if we're being all statistical and logical, you're talking about people's lives who've already suffered through enough. So you don't have to agree or disagree, like I said, there's no permanent friends, there's no permanent enemies, there's just permanent interests. I live here and I plan to advocate, and, you know, to a group of people like myself, we tend to advocate, it doesn't matter if I go up here or not, it's not where I'm from, it's where I'm at, and I'm here.
And just because you advocated months ago.
You, uh, once again, had you had a map that was, why do you keep being stuck on that, where you don't understand?
Nobody else had this problem, yeah, and you put a great map to.
Okay, we're not, we're not, I, have I not been asking for a map to be better?
We brought the map here in person, and I laid it out on this table, it was like a.
Label, okay, once again, then I must be blind, because I had two of those maps blown up, you recall that? Even when Dustin made the maps, they weren't totally labeled outright, and I had them not only blown up, did I not have them laminated? So I, I'm, I don't, I don't get into the weeds of continuing to repeat something that I've been saying from day one, just a labeled map.
No, just that, that's like the last hour you wanna get into.
It's not the last hour, once again, once again, a vote is a vote, but there's still common council, you have to go over that hurdle. So now we know, we can't go back and forth and keep presenting the same map, that's good information to know. If I'm out, stepping outside the boundary of this place, that's even good information to know. So when you get in a press conference, let's just be clear and reality-based, you don't have to mention my name, or be, feel free to, because I ain't hiding from nobody, but there is some distinction when it comes to things that are going to be a long-term effect. The end, and that's period, and I've been bringing it up, and just a map would have been great, so I can label everything. I'm not gonna guess something, and I'm not gonna keep saying something that's not coming to be, okay, well, let's do this map, let's do that, and now at the nineteenth hour, you wanna go on label, okay, almighty, it will be your detriment, because we're not sitting here silently, we're not undervalued, underestimated, marginalized like you think. So, that being said, thank you for asking, move on. I'll make a motion that we go home now.
Okay.
Whatever.
Just a second, I'll.
Just one more comment. Um, I was in this Stratmore area, which has now been moved into the near west side and Tepel. And for once, I am happy, because I have worked in the near west side, I have done tons of work on the near west side with the Hispanic population, and for once, I am glad that they are included with Stratmore, near west side, and Tepel, because that gives that population a better voice than they've had in the past. So there are some compromises that we had to make in order to get these maps. And I can tell you that the people in Stratmore are not gonna be happy to be.
They'll be happy to be out of the South Side, and we're happy to see them go, so they.
They'll be happy on everything. They will be more than unhappy to be co-parenting near west side of the Tepel, because they're quote exclusive. But I for one am happy, and I'm willing to sell that, because it creates more diversity and a bigger voting block for people who have been unrepresented for so many years by the, I'm not even gonna say it, by the current situation as it is, and then I second the motion to go home.
Okay. Molly?
I second the motion.
Alright, all favor, but gentlemen, alright, opposed, goodbye, thank you.